I call this Board of Commissioners meeting, Y-16, 2024, to order. Please join me in the pledge of allegiance.
Allegiance is unified by the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
As a recipient of federal funding and support, Deerborn County's efforts to ensure non-discrimination and equal access to all citizens, the county gathers statistical data regarding participants in county activities. Therefore, we have provided a voluntary Title VI public involvement survey to meeting. You're not required to complete this survey. Our reform is anonymous and will be used solely for the purpose of monitoring our compliance with Title VI and the new law.
Thanks, Andy. Commissioner Thatcher is the Board Commissioner's president. He is absent this week. He's on vacation. He's asked me to run the meeting, and we'll go forward with that. Old business, State Line Road demolition bid open. It's old daily.
Good evening, Nicole Daly, Director of Planning and Zending. We're here to open bid packages for the demolition of a unsite building on State Line Road. I am going to be opening six. Once I open eight, myself and Bill will be reviewing these for the lowest of best, and we should have that reviewed by the end of the week. The first one is Orshol Excavating with a... Can you just have a little picture? With a bid of $8,200. And that was Orshol Excavating. And next is Prost Excavating with a bid of $11,400. And that was Prost Excavating. And next is Wolf Contracting. A bid for $12,450.
Wolf Contracting.
Next, I have Howard Excavating. They are at $15,748. Again, that was Howard Excavating. And next, I have Darren Gunter Excavating. With a bid of $11,800. Again, that was Darren Gunter Excavating. And last, I have Dave Almira, contractor, with a bid of $69,736. Part two, part three of the road. Nope.
Just gonna pay you a lot.
It's my bid package. So, like I said, we'll go over these, and myself and Bill will make the decision. Any questions, Mike?
Thanks, Nicole.
Thank you.
It's sweet to have that number of bids. Better than last time.
Yeah.
And we had the proposed zoning map amendment. That needs to be tabled again.
Yeah.
Do you have any motion to table that?
I'll make a motion to table it.
Second or in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Sorry, sorry.
Motion table, go ahead.
And I know Anthony Smart, who's redevelopment's attorney, has been in contact with Joseph Henry Construction. The way the law reads is if the commissioners take no action on these within 90 days, then it goes into effect without commissioner's action. So, I've let them know that what that cutoff is and what our last meeting before that deadline would be. Because the reason I didn't have a favorable recommendation, but it was contingent upon Joseph Henry Construction entering into an agreement with redevelopment to actually purchase the law. So, if that's not done, and I can't think off the top of my head what that cutoff meeting is, but if that's not done by that cutoff meeting, then my recommendation would be that the redevelopment was to be denied, and then just go back to redevelopment to start a new process.
Andy, I think it was the second commissioner's meeting in August.
Second.
That will have to be...
Yeah, because we've tabled it a couple times.
Yeah.
So, like I said, I've relayed those dates to Nicole and Anthony, and I know Anthony's been in contact with Joseph Henry Construction, so that they have a target date to work towards.
If I'm hearing that right, we want to... If they don't come to an agreement, then we want to deny it.
Right. Because the recommendation was favorable, but it was contingent on that agreement.
Right, they don't have the agreement, so they don't have the contingent.
Yeah.
So, we want to make sure we don't lose that on the...
We don't want to miss that 90-day mark, because the way the law reads, it would go through without your action at that point.
Thanks for that, Andy. New business, Paula's presentation. Pat Hawkins.
Good afternoon, Commissioners. Mr. Biden, sit down. My name is Patricia Hawkins. I'm the Treasurer of the Paws of Deerborn County. With me today are Board members, Scottin Pelfrey, Bonnie Hartman, and Martin Tetrugia. And we are here today for a very big ask, for a very big week. And that is, we respectfully ask that Deerborn County increase our funding from the current $11,000 per month to $20,000 per month. I know, I'm ordering. Let me just tell you briefly what the drivers for this are. The primary is the requirement that all animals adopted or released from an animal care facility be spayed or neutered. This is in compliance with Indiana Code 15-20-4-3, which took effect on July 1, 2021. We are also giving greater support for animal control needs, particularly with the multiple boarding situations that have happened in Deerborn County. There is an increased number of animals held for quarantine for the resolution of court cases. There is an increase in our facility costs, including the space that we provide for animal control. Inflation is up 40% since 2011, with 3.3% forecast for 2024. Just a little background for those who may not know, Paws has operated the Humane Center since 2011. Our original contract was for a three-year period with annual renewals. Our initial support was $10,000 per month. It was increased to $11,000 per month in 2022. Our contract requires that we maintain a facility to provide care, confinement, return to owner services, and required euthanasia for all Deerborn County residents and companion animals. As part of our contract, we supply animal control with the space needed for their operations, including kennel space. They have 1,158 square feet in our facility, and if you look at a very conservative $11 per square foot, that equals $12,738 per month that we are, by our contract, providing to animal control. We also pay for all of their utilities. We also are responsible for the day-to-day care of any animals that are in their jurisdiction, those being held as straightholds, or those being quarantined, or those who have to be held for court cases. Our monthly operating costs increased from $28,765 in 2012 to approximately $60,000 per month in 2024. This was driven by increases in salaries, general overhead, medicines and medical supplies, and the required spay-neuters. In 2023 alone, we spent $158,750 to spay and neuter animals prior to adoption or to release from our shelter. We have also implemented aggressive programs to reduce animal intake, trap neutering release, barn cat program. We also provide food to Deerborn County residents who are struggling to feed their animals. Now, full disclosure there, many people donate food to us, and we turn around, and in most cases, we give that food out to residents to help them, because any animal that you keep does not come through our shelter. Just wanted to let you know, because we're coming before you with a very big ask, just what we have done to date to try to reduce our costs. We have contracted with a veterinarian to do spay and neuters in our facility. By doing so, our average procedure cost was $127 in 2023. That is a savings of approximately $70 per animal versus the same procedures being done in a veterinary clinic. In 2023, we spayed or neutered 1,250 animals with a realized savings of $87,500. We are doing what is called controlled intake, which allows us to reduce our personnel costs, particularly overtime, and it also helps to keep animals out of the shelter. And what controlled intake is, is if you have an animal, you are a Deerborn County resident, you need to surrender that animal to the shelter. We work with you to control a date when that animal comes into our facility. That gives us an opportunity to see if we can line up a rescue, they are re-specific, if we can keep the animal out of our shelter entirely, or at the very least, to be able to staff without having to pay overtime or any other extraordinary expenses to have animals come in on a certain day, rather than having 200 of them come in a day. We pay that out. We have also eliminated our community cat program, and that was where we provided very discounted spay-neuter procedures to residents who have cats in their community. They may be furrow, they may be owned, but we provided them with spay-neuter. Several other things that we are considering to further reduce our costs is closing an extra day a week. Right now, we are not open to the public one day a week, and it is on that day that we do our surgical procedures in-house. We are looking at closing another day, and doing that would save us approximately $22,000 a year in personnel costs. We also plan to aggressively pursue court case reimbursement. We are no different than any other county in the country. We have seen an uptick in animal abuse and animal neglect cases, which need to be adjudicated, and during the period of time while that is awaiting disposition in a court of law, we are responsible for caring for those animals. And we are looking to recover some of the cost of our personnel, as well as food, the medicine, and whatever treatments we have to give them, so they are still there for the court case. I am happy to answer any questions you might have. If the questions are out of my specific knowledge, I can defer to my fellow board members here, or I can contact our shelter director to get the answers you might need before considering our request.
What is the county contribution? What percentage of your budget is of your total budget?
Right now, given that we are spending just under $60,000 a month, the county is probably at about 10%, 15% in any given month.
$11,000.
$11,000, yes.
This is, like you said, this is really a hard ask.
It is, I recognize that.
We did an adjustment in '22, and I know that was significantly less than what was requested in '22. But still, to look at basically a 90% rough number.
That is correct.
Increase is a little hard. And I'm not sure what council will do, because council controls the money.
I understand.
You know, sometimes it's kind of hard. And I know the price of '22 bullets has gone up, but they're a whole lot cheaper than a lot of what we're doing right now.
That is...
Sadly, that's true.
That is a very low-cost way of dealing with some things, but I would like...
That's not, that's not an appropriate answer.
Well, I understand that, but I would like to point out that, under our stewardship, the Humane Center has reached a no-kill shelter status, which, considering where we were, I think is something that all of us in the county can be proud of. Our live release rate in 2023 was 98.3%. Of the animals that came into our shelter were sent to rescues or adopted. The minimum threshold for no-kill is 50%.
I don't think we... Go ahead.
Well, I would, I guess, first of all, I don't agree with the 22 comment.
You know what, I didn't think either of you...
Okay.
I didn't think the commissioner meant it like...
Okay.
You're trying to...
Yeah. The... Is there any way to adjust that ask? I mean, we can send it forward to council, but, you know, I'm not certain that they're going to be comfortable almost doubling the...
I understand. Is there an amount that you wouldn't be comfortable with?
I mean, ultimately, it's an amount that council has to be comfortable with. I mean, the commissioners today, we agree 100%, and we'll send it forward with a budget ask of 20 grand a month, but unless you get council on board with that, it's not going to happen.
I understand.
Well, I guess that's what I'm trying to say. I think if you went with a lower number, and I'm not, I don't know what that magical number is, there might be a favorable outcome from council, is I guess what I'm trying to say.
Hey, can you give me any guidance on what the cap might be, based on your experience with that?
Well, having sat on council for eight years, I don't know. I'm thinking somewhere...
If there were a progressive...
That's what I guess.
...goal, where a 10% increase this year, followed by 10 and 10, that's still not approaching your ask, but...
It might be more powerful from the council.
Probably a little more agreeable.
I guess that's what, that's where I'm coming from. I, having sat on council for eight years, I don't think you'll get $20,000. I'm just, I'm being honest.
And what you've done is something that philosophically ought to hold a lot of the department heads. If you don't ask for what you need, council's not going to give you extra money.
That's right.
So, asking is appropriate, but if the ask was a little less, it'd be probably a little easier for them to deal with.
All right.
And that's not something that commissioners deal with, as far as the money. It's going to come from council.
All right. But your suggestion is perhaps a progressive 10% a year?
Yeah.
Over a period of years, when our contract is renegotiated this fall?
Yeah. That would be, I think that's, I think that'd be a lot more powerful for council.
Okay, okay. I appreciate that.
Yeah.
Then, do you have any other questions for me?
No, I do think you do a phenomenal job, and I appreciate the things that you have accomplished, because I kind of, kind of know just from history what you, how it started and where you're at today, and it's a pretty phenomenal facility. You know, I think you do great work.
Thank you.
Being an animal lover and a dog lover, I appreciate what you do.
Thank you.
And I, but I also would like you to be able to get some funds, and I think if you approach it the way we suggest, I think maybe you would, you'd be more likely to get a favorable answer.
All right.
One thing that may help too is a little bit, and you probably don't want to go in detail, but your budget, how your budget lines lay out, how much is for food, electric, utilities?
Yes.
To show some hard costs, you have no influence over your utility.
I wish we did.
Well, we all do. But then to show some of the hard numbers, what comes in, and then where it goes out, whether it's personnel costs, feeding the animals, you know how your budget's set up.
Yes, and we have all that captured in my guidance, you know, in QuickBooks, and we can show the increases over the history of our shelter being opened from 2011 to 2024. So, we would get that.
But I think another important thing to maybe re-educate some of the council people that may not know the history, that you are actually providing space for the county as well, I mean, I hope that's important to point out, because there may be some younger guys on there that are not familiar with the fact that you're doing that.
We will be certain to stress that.
I don't have any...
No, I don't either. I, I think they're asking for permission to go before council, so we have to...
If they want to give me their financials, we'll send them out.
I think we're just going to forward the request to council.
Okay.
Now, would you prefer that we talk among ourselves in line of the guidance that you had given us, and submit to you ahead of time a revised request that would go to county council? Because I'm hearing you tell me you're...
Two questions, does the contract come out?
Counselor.
Commissioners.
Okay.
But I said, if they want to send me the financials, I can send them out, because we give, before budget, we send everything out to the council.
But what you suggested might be a good idea.
What's our timeframe on budget submission?
Budget submission has already happened. I went ahead and put the increase for their full ask. No one admits, you're not going to kid me, but according to RIA, who's our financial controller...
Because we can always go down, we can't go up.
Yeah, you have to ask for, you have to advertise it, so I put the full amount in there, and it'll go, it can go down, but we couldn't go up.
I understand.
You'll be addressing council. I mean, if you wanted to run, let's see, council will meet end of August?
August 19.
August 19.
I mean, if you, if we wanted to present a revision to us in August, we'll take a look at it, but really, it's the presentation you're going to make to council, and, you know, if you go in and we've forwarded your request, and if you go in and adjust it through the auditor, and then explain that to them, I think that'll give you better footing with council.
Thank you very much.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Todd Listerman, county engineer, in the contract, Bridge 14.
Todd Listerman, county engineer. What I have before you tonight, first is the preliminary engineering contract for Bridge 14, Bell Springs Road, between Deerborn County and American Structure Point, in the amount of $495,000. This is a end dot contract for all the preliminary engineering, right-of-way engineering, basically everything, environmental studies, everything necessary for the federal aid project that we're awarded 80% funding for, all the way through up to construction letting. So, what I'm asking for tonight is to go ahead and approve from commissioners a signed contract between American Structure Point and Deerborn County in the amount of $495,000. Again, this is federal aid assist program, standard end dot contract that we have to use.
Any questions? A motion to approve contract with LPA, the amount of $495,000. So moved. I'll second. All in favor?
Aye.
Motion approved.
Here's two contracts, signed by my own name.
And you also have 2024 line striping agreement?
Correct. As part of the final paperwork for the contract, we've already awarded the contract, awarded the contract, done the Form 96, accepted it, and done that. The last piece of paperwork is the actual contract agreement, basically acknowledging contract is going to follow all provisions that are inside the contract. So, I'm asking for that is approval of the contract agreement for 2024 line striping.
Questions? I've got a motion to approve the contract agreement with OLSB Construction Company, as described by Mr. Listerman.
Still moving.
Second, all in favor?
Aye. And there is only one line, so this will be for you this time tonight.
We'll fill out the form.
I'll fill out the rest, and then they...
Thank you. Council, would you like to give us a copy?
Yep.
Okay. Okay. 2024 contract for emergency medical responder service.
This is, I think we've called them a first responder contract, like we've done with Friendship and New Trenton. This is with the Dillsborough Volunteer Fire Department Incorporated, something that was highlighted last meeting in the statement that was read. It's to provide $20,000 to the fire department for the first emergency medical responder service that they've been providing throughout the year. It's something that I know the commissioners wanted to get in place, to give them some money for the help that they've been providing.
This is sort of a catch-up for what we've been doing with other first responder services. It's appropriate in Dillsborough, we appreciate the service of the fire department. Any questions? Motion to approve the 2024 contract for emergency medical responder service with Dillsborough Volunteer Fire Department, Inc., in the amount of $20,000. So moved. Second, all in favor?
Aye.
Motion passes.
Jason, when is your next meeting?
August 6. It's the first one in office.
So, I don't know if you need to take this to a meeting to have that done, but it's going to be signed by your president, which is you.
Atest.
No, Jared's the president.
Jared's the president, okay. Jared and then secretary, and then gotten back to me, was the first one assigned.
I will get it back to you after a meeting.
Okay.
Next, we have MS4 ordinances.
Connie, what's number?
Ordinance is 011.
So, the first is ordinance 2024-00011. If you recall, Deerborn County, the incorporated areas of Deerborn County and the three cities were all designated as municipal separate storm sewer systems by IDAM a while ago now. We're at the point where we need to get our...
We're at the point where we need to get our ordinance adopted. Um, so what this first ordinance will do will establish a new chapter of the Code of Ordinances. It's chapter one fifty-six, which is municipal separate storm sewer system. Uh, section one fifty-six point oh one is adoption by reference, and one fifty-six point oh two is a section on conflict. And so one fifty-six oh one, adoption by reference, will adopt, only adopt the actual storm water management ordinance, which is the very thick. Um, oh my gosh, it's forty-three pages, forty-four pages. Um, this is something, uh, we've worked with OHM advisors on since the beginning. Uh, Sandy and Kyla, Denny and Nicole and Todd, and they've met with me a number of times. I know they've met a number of times on their own. They've gone through storm water ordinance. We've made a number of edits. I think you guys have seen the page that has all of the edits in it. Uh, we've shared that with our advisors at OHM so that they could review it. Uh, we've shared it with the city attorneys so that they knew what changes we were making to the ordinance. Um, so, but now we're at the time where we're going to get the, um, ordinance actually adopted. Um, enforcement won't start until the technical standards are ready to go. Those are still being reviewed internally. Um, that is a hundred and eighty-three page document.
Yeah.
It's a little longer.
No, it's a little easier.
Uh, but we do, uh, we do have, you know, deadlines that we have to meet. So, uh, tonight we would be, uh, asking to adopt ordinance twenty twenty-four dash zero one one, which will, uh, again, create chapter one fifty-six in the Code of Ordinances and adopt the storm water management ordinance for Dearborn County.
Sub move.
I'll second. All in favor?
Aye.
Uh, we've adopted ordinance twenty twenty-four zero zero one one.
So the, the storm water management page has July eighteenth on there. I marked it out, put sixteen, so I think I spin it to later in the day with an actual July sixteenth date on that, so same as Todd that person.
Okay, great. So I'll reprint that.
Just the first page and then write Exhibit A on it. All right, so now that that is taken care of, so the next ordinance would be twenty twenty-four dash zero one two. And this will create, uh, it will adopt the fee schedule um, that again, Nicole and Sandy and Denny and Kyla have been working on. Um, the fee schedule, I think you guys have that. Um, so that would be Exhibit A. The fee schedule would be adopted. And then also it would establish the MS four fund. Um, in section thirty-four point thirty-three, there'd be a new section of the Code of Ordinances. Um, this was not included in chapter one fifty-six because all of our funds are in chapter thirty-four. That's why it's a separate, it's in a different area. Uh, but it would be a non-reverting fund. This is where the fees would be paid into, but it would be subject to appropriation by council. So it would be money that Sandy would have available to her, subject to appropriation by council, but it wouldn't roll into the general at the end of the year. Uh, our building, I'd say building fund, same way.
Aye.
Um, and and it does have in here, there's a statement about what it can be used on and also that she can coordinate with other departments. So if her and Todd have to work on some storm water system together, then they can, you know, work in conjunction to spend money out of this MS four account, um, towards that, so. I miss anything, Tina?
Sounds good.
So, uh, yeah, twenty twenty-four dash zero one two. Again, that would be, uh, an ordinance to adopt the storm water management ordinance fee schedule and to establish the MS four fund in section thirty-four point thirty-three of the Code of Ordinances.
Okay.
Sub move.
Second, all in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Motion passes.
All right, so then, um, again, uh, the technical review standards are being reviewed internally. Um, once those are are brought back, uh, are finalized, they'll be brought back to you for approval. Uh, there won't be any formal ordinance without it. It would just be approved by the Board of Commissioners. Those technical review standards are are the more technical aspects of MS four. And so the way we have it structured in the ordinance is that those standards can could be modified by our tech review committee. And if they do modify, then they have to notify the Commissioners of what changes were made. But but we, as a suggestion of our advisors with OHM, we didn't want to have to do an ordinance every time we made a change to a hundred and eighty-three page document. And the technical review committee, that's why they're there, for these technical aspects. Um, and then just one last, uh, just so you're all aware, the City's had approached about possibly utilizing, doing an interlocal to have Sandy be their MS four coordinator. We have let them know that that, with Sandy and Kyla talking about who's going to be responsible for what, that we just didn't think that was feasible, that Sandy could do all of that. Um, I didn't get any blowback from that team now, so, um, but they have been, they have been put on notice about that, um, so, but I know they're all working on it as well. And then Sandy and Denny and Nicole and Todd are all here. If you have any questions about MS four.
Got nothing?
Nothing.
All right.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Anything, okay. Uh, Administrator Sue Hayden.
Um, no, just as a reminder, I'll be moving Thursday, um, and on the on vacation code following Thursday.
Good trip. Monitor claims?
Yeah.
Motion to approve claims?
Sub move.
Second, all in favor? Uh, which claim is approved?
So it can't be too heavy Exhibit A for the ordinance for the fee schedule.
It should be attached, it should be on there.
The fee schedule is Exhibit A, it's just the, did you write Exhibit A on it?
At the top.
Okay.
And then, uh, the storm water management ordinance would be Exhibit A to twenty twenty-four dash zero one one. Sue just needs to reprint the first page, which July sixteenth on there.
Payroll, motion to approve.
Sub move.
Second, all in favor?
Aye.
Payroll's approved. Motion to approve minutes from July second, two thousand twenty-four.
Sub move.
Second, all in favor? Right, minutes approved. Andy.
Uh, I have a letter prepared. So over the past several months, as you're all aware, we've been dealing with the, the contract for emergency medical services with the Dillsborough Emergency Ambulance Unit. There's also an agreement for medical services, uh, emergency medical services. This is a different, um, source of funding. It is from Riverboat, it's from the supplemental wage, uh, supplemental, um, wages, wage.
Supplement wagering tax.
Wagering tax, thank you. Supplemental wagering tax, this is a separate pot of funds. It's one, it's one twenty-first of five percent that Dearborn County receives, split between EMS units. Um, this is something that Commissioner Approves had caught, and so I've prepared a letter, just, do you want me to read it?
I think it's appropriate.
To humiliate concern, this letter is in regard to the twenty twenty-four agreement for medic, emergency medical services between Dearborn County and the Dillsborough Emergency Ambulance Unit, Inc., AKA the Dillsborough Emergency Unit or the DEAU. This agreement is attached for your review and is a different agreement than the twenty twenty-four contract for emergency medical service that has been discussed over the past several months. This agreement involves distributions from the Dearborn County portion of the supplemental wagering tax. As you can see, this agreement was signed by Jason Willoughby on behalf of the DEAU. As has been alleged on multiple occasions by board members of the DEAU, Mr. Willoughby was not properly elected and did not have any authority to execute any documents on behalf of the DEAU. In addition, in addition, at the time the agreement was executed by Ms. Willoughby on behalf of the DEAU, the DEAU was administratively dissolved and therefore not a functioning nonprofit corporation in the state of Indiana. As such, the attached agreement is void and no further distribution pursuant to the agreement will be made to the DEAU by Dearborn County. If for any reason you disagree that the agreement is void, please allow this letter to alternatively serve as the thirty-day notice requirement that terminates the agreement as contained in paragraph six. Sincerely, and then signed by Commissioner Approves.
And I'm signing this as for the Board of Commissioners, so we'll be in motion to approve. Uh, and just as an observation for the folks that are here, uh, this was just separate, there were multiple sources of money from the county that go to the different EMS organizations. And this small piece, uh, has its own contract. Uh, it was not initially discussed because everybody was excited about the large contracts. And we're just cleaning up a little bit of the paperwork. Uh, with that, motion to approve the letter as read by Andy.
Sub move.
Second, all in favor?
Aye.
Okay. Anything else, Andy?
Bye.
Late arrival information? Gage?
I just got two things.
Your late arrival, do we have a copy of your?
Yeah. Uh, first, I just want to give a, this is Gage's page with One Dearborn, by the way, Economic Development. But first, I wanted to start with a quick update on the One Dearborn County Stella region, where we're at with the Stella grant. Um, so for those that don't know, the Stella region that was formed from One Dearborn County, made up of town of Dillsborough, city of Greendale, and the county. Um, we were chosen as finalists for the grant. It's around eighty million dollars, split up into seven different trumps of the funding um, that we're going for later this year, that we're competing for. Um, so I'm just giving some updates on that. So recently, we, we had our first community meeting, community advisory meeting in Greendale last month. Um, and that went well. Since then, we've created a steering committee, an official steering committee. That steering committee is made up of local leadership from all the communities that are part of the region. So we've got, um, Mayor Vince Karstader, Town Council President Doug Baker, for Dillsborough, um, Jim Thatcher of Atha County, uh, Nicole Daly of Atha County, um, Derek Walker from Dillsborough, uh, Mike Perleberg, and Eric Krantz. And, uh, there's potential to add more. We haven't finalized that yet. Um, those meetings, we had our first meeting last, or two weeks ago, so we'll be having another meeting this week. We do it every two weeks. Um, and that's just for that small steering committee. It's going to be making, uh, a lot of those kind of decisions. Um, we're also having that larger community meeting once a month. Um, everyone's invited to come to that, um, and provide their thoughts and everything. It's kind of a community thing. Uh, we recently hired and contracted with HWC Engineering to be our consultant for our strategic investment plan. Um, that strategic investment plan, we will be submitting to OCRE in November, and that's basically what they make their decisions off of. And then we will be doing a seventy-five minute presentation to OCRE in December, um, based off that strategic investment plan. And we will begin starting that investment plan here, either this week or next week, but we started talks on that. Um, other than that, that's really where we're at right now in terms of Stella. Um, there's some things further off, but as of right now, that's where we're at.
I'd like to thank One Dearborn for bringing this together and taking the lead in organizing it. And also congratulate City of Greendale and the town of Dillsborough for stepping up in the beginning to participate in this. If we don't play, you can't win. Uh, and their involvement is is key to this and could have huge rewards for the area.
So the next thing I have for you, and I sent an email earlier, um, it's in your package as well, is this support letter, letter of support for the Dearborn County Redevelopment Commission's SCI Ready, Ready to Grant Application. Um, they're going to be applying for a grant and an order for their grant application to be considered by the SCI Ready Board. They have to have a letter of support signed by a local government entity. Um, so I think it's just, we just need one thing to ensure it would be yours, Rick. Um, this doesn't obligate any funds or anything. It's just simply a letter of support that allows them to be considered for funding.
Uh, request a motion to approve letter of support for SCI Ready Incorporated.
Sub move.
Second, all in favor?
Aye.
Signature is approved.
And as Stella continues, Mike and I plan to do this at all the different, whole lot of different community meetings, so we'll probably continue to come and give updates on that.
Great.
Thank you.
Thanks, Steve. Any other late arrival information? Public comment?
Doug Baker, Dillsborough Council member, current president. I want to thank the Commissioners, the last fire department, for stepping up to the first. It's a step in the right direction, definitely better than what we, what we've had the last few months. Uh, but we don't want this to be a permanent solution. We want to keep fighting, keep moving forward to restoring EMS services in Dillsborough. Thank you for all your support and help. Anything we can do in Dillsborough, reach out to us, please.
I think the key is to keep communicating, and I think that's ongoing because we've got to have more than we've got. Uh, I think we're moving in the right direction. Thanks, Steve.
Yeah, thanks, Steve.
Any additional public comment? Commissioner comments? No.
I don't have any.
No one has nothing, I have nothing. With that, motion to adjourn.
Sub move.
Second, and all in favor, we are adjourned.